Eleven o'clock agenda item. Discussing millings project and whether taxpayers' funds were misused. We gotta keep that door open. Whether taxpayers' funds were misused by commissioners. Did everybody sign into the signup board? If not, please do. And when you, if anybody that wants to get up and say anything, please state your name so Mike can get it correctly in the minutes. Would you wanna kick this off, Blaine, or shall we just open it up?
I can if you want. So, just love everyone knows from my standpoint, about two people talked to me about these issues. So, I told them that I would have an independent review of it. And so, I wrote to the, went to Attorney General's office on Friday. So, I'm still waiting to hear back from them. But I believe they will review the matter and do some investigation and get back to me. So, that's what I would say from my standpoint.
So, I will open it up to the audience if somebody has something to share or a statement.
I'll go first since nobody's saying anything. First of all, I'm here because of a conversation I had down in the Hall Restaurant with Commissioner Adler. And basically, this was when the restaurant was open years ago. And he pretty much said, "The heck with the people at the lake." And I chose to live there. And I said, "Yes, I did choose to live there. And I didn't wanna pay the high taxes, but I do." So, I wanted that out there right away because of spending the tax money. And then, if we're gonna be testing the millings and stuff now, why didn't you test it on Fire Hall? Let me read my stuff.
Okay, can everybody hear?
No.
I'll back up.
All right, so, if you're testing the millings, why wouldn't you test it at Fire Hall, county shop, Mall Road, or school or something like that? It'd be more realistic, there'd be more traffic on it, and you'd see how it'd work. And then, Commissioner Adler was quoted in the Phillipsburg Mail as saying, "The millings are junk." Okay, if they're junk, why did they get put on the Maxville Road? Are we gonna have to pay to get it torn up, removed, and other material put in? I guess that's an question you guys need to ask yourselves. And if Commissioner Adler did this stuff in front of everybody, and it was gonna be okay? What if he got caught, so now he's facing this? What else may have been done? Maybe the Attorney General should check into that? And the apology and the Phillipsburg Mail does not remedy the solution. It's admission to guilt. So, can any of the people in here, any taxpayers now, go up, get county equipment, take it, use it? If you get, if you don't get caught, fine. If you get caught, say, "Okay, we'll just pay for the hours we used." It's not breaking the law, I guess. And then, Commissioner's putting the county crews and everybody in this position. What does that do to them? Does that, I mean, they probably knew it was wrong. Were they fair in that something, repression may happen? They said no. Because I'm sure it's in the handbook, you're not supposed to be doing this stuff. And then, I guess my end thing there would be this vote that maybe the county employees should be questioned by the Attorney General in person so he can get the information of all the stuff that has been done. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anybody else?
Yep.
Paul next. So, a lot of the things he already pretty well touched on what I wanted to ask. But when you guys said there was being a test done, you know? So, I talked to Mark Tagg, I called him up. I said, "Mark, half that pile is already gone." I said, "Did you guys throw it over the bank?" He said, "What'd you do with it?" He said, "No." He said, "We actually put it on the road, Charlie Parks', we built up a bunch. We did some on Atlantic's Road. We put some up Bear Gulch." Said, "We tested the Milton machine that was in question." He said, "I ran two machines. I reported to the county commissioners, it worked fine, it broke everything up." I guess I, I guess I can't figure out, so why wasn't that enough of a test? When we had the flood, you guys used the exact same materials, same pile. You did a stretch of road up Maxville, looks beautiful. Danny used the milling, Mark Milton machine on it. And I just don't understand where this, it looks like to me it was just for personal gain, I.
Well, let me, let me answer that, okay? So, because it was stated just a minute ago that the same millings were used in Maxville, I'm not sure. There's two piles of millings, one on this end of the county yards, or the state yards, and one on the other end of the state yards, okay? The one towards Drummond is the oldest pile of millings, big chunks in it.
And that's why they hauled up Maxville?
And we've, even with Mark, we, we just didn't use it. No, that isn't what we hauled up Maxville. We hauled the Maxville, the millings on this end, which we always knew were pretty good. The millings that was explained to me, Paul said, "I don't know what I'm gonna do with these. I don't know if I can mix them, I don't know if I can rejuvenate them or not." I actually, so we, that's why we did the test. We've actually had people come in, you know, for free, saying, "Okay, you're gonna mix it with this or that." And the mixing agent was so expensive, we said, "No, these are, this is, when I first started, years passed." So, that pile's been sitting there, Lawrence, on the north end of the yards for a long, long time and unusable. And Paul wanted to figure out a way to use it. Well, it just has.
Really?
Yeah. Now, the stuff on Maxville, if you go look at the pile on the, on the south end, it's.
And you just finally touched that a week ago. You had never taken nothing out of that.
No, we had tested, we knew it wasn't gonna, you're talking about the pile on the.
The south end Downward Richards guys had never been anything taken out of it.
No, we knew that was good milling.
Bill, I watched your loader running it through a grizzly and hauling a dump truck up to Maxville.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
On the north end, the stuff that was junk, the stuff didn't disappear.
No, no, the, well, not the stuff, as far as I know, all the stuff that went to Maxville, unless he mixed some of it, was the stuff we knew were gonna be good millings.
If you go into a pile, you can tell when it's been hauled out.
Oh, Lawrence, you're right on that. They took the rest of that out of there, and they were mixing it, beating the loader, and dumped it in two different spots up there, and then brought that other end. But you are right.
Well, I'm just saying, he could've mixed it, you know? But what I'm saying is, we knew the millings on this end were gonna work, and the other ones were trying to figure out how. That's how it was explained to me. And they said, you know, we need, we wanna test. Look, it doesn't make this any better just because we were testing it. You know, to Mr. Villas, town is, you know, like, I don't know, Fire Department or something like that. They didn't wanna do it there. And they didn't wanna do it on the county road and make something else we'd have to deal with.
Well, I just, I guess I just don't understand why you need to do a test when you'd already been using it. I mean, and then on the one little thing, and have some environmental stuff you wanted to know about water and stuff. Well, you've been using millings for years, there's not really a whole lot difference. But old millings or new millings is still all the same. So, you've already been putting it on the roads. So, all that was kind of a little patch up, as far as I'm concerned. But that's basically, you know, a lot of it. But there's other things that I'm still kinda waiting to hear about. So, I'm just gonna kinda leave it at that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll say something.
My name is Beatrice Pritchard, and we're taxpayers and grant company. And when I read that article in the paper, I was so appointed that made me come to this meeting and tell you that, you know, I live in Anaconda, and I know how corrupt that government was. And I always thought that you guys were way better. When Mr. Wobbling and Mr. Martin were commissioners there, they were physically responsible to all of us. And I thought that you, that we were continuing to do that. And we can't allow you to be that corrupt. I think that you should resign, or you should just do something. But we, we don't want Grant County to run like their government.
Well, I have to say something here, Beatrice. You know, I was, I was sitting here, that original discussion came up with the road department supervisor and these two commissioners. I was sitting here talking to Blaine with a couple other issues, dealing with a couple other issues. And I, I've worked for government for 55 years. And that was a wrong choice to make. I just wish that Bill would've leaned over and, and tapped me and says, "We need you here for a minute." And I would've instantly said, "Absolutely not." There's, I mean, I, I agree, I mean, and we talked about it, the three of us. And I, we all three agree that it was a dumb, it was a dumb move. But it's, it's four weeks ago now, and so, I just don't have anything else to say. Is, is there anybody else who wants to?
Yeah.
Is there somebody over here?
I just had some questions about Paul Alt. And giving away a county water tank, I don't know, I heard that. Whether it's true or not, I don't know. And then, I heard he's leasing his own trucks back to haul gravel for the road. And I don't think that's right if that's true. You know, I don't, I'm, I don't know if all that stuff, you know? I mean, you just hear people talk, and it isn't like you go looking for it. They just say, "Did you, did you hear this?" And then, is Nicky Cycle working for the county now?
Yes.
I heard that they hired him back, his tractor, you know, to do work. He was doing some work with something up on the Maxville Road. They hired Nicky's tractor back.
I don't know about that, but I can explain the whole trucking thing. Paul went through a process where he had to submit a resume, and there were four applicants. We reviewed all four applicants, Paul was the finalist. Before we offered Paul a employment and negotiated salary and all that stuff, he told us, he said, "Well, I've got some things I need to tell you that, you know, may or may not qualify me to work here." He said, "I want to operate trucks in this county." And we said, "Well, you know, what we'd like you to do is to lease them to somebody else, okay? Because you can't be the road supervisor and, you know, do similar work." He did that, he leased them to Bob Weaver, and I think some other equipment as well. When the fires start more up here, we had the opportunity to, to force several thousand dollars worth of material that we were gonna put on the road and try to save the road. And it was an opportunity for us to get, when the fires hit on and they leave, we get, we get to keep the material. So, Paul came in and said, "I need to hire some more trucks." And we, you know, we asked him to do it local if he could, and we said he would. And that's actually where the truck, the.
Tractor?
Tractor was leased, was, belongs to Paul Alt. And leased, and that tractor was actually pulling a truck up here. But, you know, that's what we agreed to do. And we said, "If you lease your stuff out to somebody else," and we actually hired that person back at some point. Frankly, it was the only belly dump he could find. So, he called and they, you know, it was a totally different transaction. We paid that like any other contract. I mean, there's 3200 people in this county. And one thing we tried to do is use our local contractor as much as possible. So, yeah, you're gonna have a situation like that once in a while. So, I mean, that's how we dealt with it. John, whether, you know, other, other options go to the zoo, you know, or somewhere else. And, and so, what he wanted was a belly dump, and that's where we got it from.
But the truck tractor was, is my understanding, was Paul's. The belly dump belonged to somebody else, Charlie Parks.
And all of it leased to Bob.
Right.
So, do you actually have the contract, the lease contract?
From Bob, yeah, sure. Because we have to make sure he's got insurance. Like if we hired you, Lawrence, we, we asked him to bring all that stuff.
Well, I was kinda told at our little illegal meeting that I couldn't spread gravel on the county road with the dump trucks. So, I didn't really even have a chance at it.
Well, and about how legal our meeting was, we had a discussion with Lawrence about some of these issue issues. And certainly, it became clear to me, you know, like Martin said, how dumb this idea was, it was not.
So, was Bart notified that the two of us were meeting?
Huh?
Was Bart notified that you, that Scott and you were meeting with him at the county shop?
Yeah.
I was, but I was, I came down here to sign some checks and then go out to Myers Fire. I was requested to be out there.
Anyway, before we get everybody confused, I'm sure you're wondering, "How am I heck with a goofy idea like this?" Because that was a conversation between Commissioner Adler and the county road supervisor. There was a conversation between the county attorney and Bart right here. And I'm kind of in the middle trying to keep up with those conversations. There's nothing in the minutes because we didn't make any formal action about how we're gonna test these buildings. But I'm picking up that before we put this stuff on Maxville Road, we gotta make sure they're gonna work, especially that pile on that end. Were we gonna do that? That was a conversation. And I, I have to admit, I heard Paul and Commissioner Adler say, "Well, you know, you could've come down and dumped in my yard," you know? And I, hey, I've not, I've been in this business a long time, I knew that was stupid. And I was like, "No, it ain't gonna work." But then here's where I did make a mistake. As this thing progressed on, I didn't find out where they was gonna go to do their testing. And I, and I didn't do diligence. Frankly, Paul and I were working with the foresters trying to get paid. They owed us 73,000 bucks, and it looked like they were gonna back out. And I ended up, and we were calling every day, we ended up in Senator Daines's office to get paid. Different story. And that's not an excuse. I could've said, "No, Scott, we're not doing that." And I'm sure he wouldn't have done it. And I know if I'd've said, "No, Paul, we're not doing that," I know it would've gotten done. Because Paul works for us. And what we tell him to do, he does. So, he really, this is Paul's deal, this is us, this is what the public has. We decided, I mean, I don't know, quickly, this is like a really dumb thing. And we decided to make a formal apology for one reason. We didn't want you to think we were a keeping it in front of us. We did it in the papers as quickly as we could. When people called me, I didn't back off. I said, "Yep, you're absolutely right. That was the dumbest thing we ever did. And we're gonna do what we can to make it right. But we're not gonna lie to you about it." So, there you go.
I got a question. What did I read in the paper?
State your name.
I'm Andy Weaver.
Okay.
Looked out bare mouth. I saw in the paper, all back there, where you put some millings out, I'm assuming on a public street up here in Payburn, and then you were sued by a adjacent landowner? Was that the same millings that are being discussed here, out of the same pile and stuff like that?
Yeah, I don't know if it was or not, Andy, but it's out of town. And what we did is, we put some, was it millings or was it?
There was millings.
Well, yeah.
And it, whatever they put on them and ran off. They were trying to do them dry and shake them out.
Well, to me, it seems like, I know a little bit about millings, a little bit about roadwork. I've been around a couple of years. It seems to me like you take millings out somewhere, you put it on a public road, and you get sued for $42,000. Why would you wanna take the risk of going and putting them out somewhere again, take a chance of being sued? If you got somebody that wants to take them, get them out of there, I'd say, "Get rid of them if they wanna take them." I'm sure it costs less to haul them down there than it would be. I'd rather do that than be putting the bill for another $40,000 lawsuit, maybe more. I was kinda wondering if they were the same millings, or did they ever test them to see what kind of chemical or came out of it?
Yeah, there was one where they put the mag on, that they mixed with them, with the oil and the mag, and the runoff killed these trees. So, this way, they just thought they just threw the water and hard water. It was a bad idea, I admit it. I really screwed up.
So, if that's the case, why are you putting mag on the road still with the millings up Maxville when you're running along Boulder Creek?
Because they took them out that other pile there, and then that one pile they left them down over is what they said. We still to this day don't believe it was due to the fact, but that's what the insurance company come back with.
For the record, Suzie Brown, just listening, I have a couple of questions, and this one is for Scott. I would like to know what equipment and who the county employees were that spread the millings on the driveway? I've heard various things, so I'd just like to know, was it, who was involved? Who were the employees that?
Jim, Kyle, Brad, Neil.
So, four, four guys? Paul wasn't down there, the supervisor, the road supervisor?
He was there on and off.
On and on? Were you there?
Yeah.
And what equipment was used?
Tractor and a van motor, one water truck, a roller, a ton of weight.
Is this the first?
An adoser.
Okay. Is this the first time that you have used a piece of county equipment?
No, I've used stuff over at my shop there, and old stuff, same as, you know, right there where I have my shop branded. No, I've used that loader, I've loaded heavy stuff.
So, you've used county equipment for personal use?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I have, when did you sign the lease contract with Bob Weaver?
Well, just one job we did, and it was the forester group by now.
Wasn't, I, I just noticed there was a lease agenda item last week on last, no. Long before that? And so, how long does this contract run?
This job, it was just for a job.
One job?
Yeah.
One job, okay.
I know. Did we use any on road, of the road, or did we? We made maybe two jobs. It was during the forest service rebuild of the roads. You know, we had all those trucks and stuff on the road. They were hammering our roads. We had an opportunity, they said, "We'll pay for the material and bag." The county road supervisor went out with the forest service people, and they got it.
And I, I don't, it don't have a problem. I just wondered if, you know, when the lease was done, or the contract and how it read.
Yeah, and just to be clear, this is not a long-term contract, it's by the job.
By the job?
Yeah.
Each time?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I have another question for Blaine. Why did it take so long to contact the Attorney General's office? I mean, I've heard this happened four weeks ago.
You know, I don't have, don't have a reason. I guess, I'd say that's a few weeks, Attorney General's office will look at it. I guess they'd disagree if that's the long time.
Okay, okay. And, but we will pursue it.
The, the letter, letter sent, yeah.
Another question for the commissioners. Has Paul Alt been written up for this?
No.
No. Have you?
And, well, there's a reason.
Okay.
She, he was.
Hold on one second, a employee, that's a, that's a private employee personality.
Okay, okay. I'll rephrase. Was Paul Alt given a copy of the personnel policy when he was hired?
Yes.
Okay. So, he, okay. I believe that there has been official misconduct here, and I definitely think it needs to be looked into. I know of one commissioner in the county that did this, kinda the same thing. And he had felony charges brought against him. I don't know if it went to trial. I do know that he did resign as a commissioner. I also think that Paul Alt is on a probation period, and I think the commissioners should take a serious look at that. I think when he was hired, the minutes when I read them, I think that Scott Adler should have abstained due to a conflict of interest. I don't know that he should've participated. Because you have had business dealings with Paul Alt before. And I think just to protect yourself, you maybe shouldn't have done that. But that's my opinion, and I'm just going on the record as saying such.
So, let me reiterate.
There is a code of ethics.
Yeah, I understand, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying with respect to Supervisor Paul, he works at the pleasure commission, at the directional commission. Anything he did in this incident was at the directional commission. Okay, so, he is our employee. If we asked him to go stand on Highway 1 for eight hours, I guess he'd have to do it. Do you see what I'm saying? I don't think Paul, in other words, the mistake, or whatever you wanna call it, was made by us, not by Paul, okay?
Okay. I understand what you're saying there.
I mean, I think we'll take responsibility, I, I would take responsibility as a commissioner, and this mistake, and, you know, not stopping it. But I don't think Mr. Alt is, he's just working at the directional commission. I think it'd be unfair to have him involved in this anymore.
Thank you. Go ahead. State your name.
Jerry Coon, Coon with a K. I guess we beat up the driveway issue, and there's lots of comments on that. So, all I can say about that is, I prefer bad millings to poison patch mud any day. But my comment's more on the mag chloride issue. Every year, it seems like, come the wet season, we get around to magging the roads. We choke on dust all summer. And then come late August, September, we mag the roads, and then we get moisture on it. It draws moisture anyway, so now we got slime and corrosion on our vehicles. Why don't we mag the roads in the dry season, June, July, so it lasts through the summer? And then you let the moisture take care of the dust in the winter. And the same issue with mag chloride on Maxville Road. You magged it a few weeks ago, and then you put expensive millings right over the top of the mag. So, either the millings were a waste or the mag was a waste, one or the other. Lot of dollars going down in the drain there.
Well, I asked that question too, Jerry. And basically, what I was told is that the mag on the first one was to make a base for the millings. They always, he'd always planned to put the millings on. And it was a better base, it's good and hard to put that on. I don't know, I mean, you're talking to an old cop here now, a road guy, okay? So, I'm not arguing with him, I'm just saying that was the reason it was given to me, okay? The other thing is, you're absolutely right. First of all, you know, Paul gets, he's started the first day here breaking down of a fire hose because he was in the middle of a flood when we hired him. And he was actually, we were on a, filling county roads that washed completely out. So, we were at least two weeks behind on when we should've been great roads, which was figured out here. Then, forest fires started, and the opportunity to get a bunch of materials that we would never have been able to afford on Moose Lake Road, and then Upper Willacreek after that, set us even further behind, was a bad decision. And when he, you know, I mean, I don't, I hope next year you're right, we get.
Well, I understand the flood issue with the forest service is another deal, but.
But then, see what I'm saying, you're right.
Last year, you did the same thing, and the year before. Last year you did the same thing and the year before that. It seems to be the same thing every year.
We'll try and opt to next year.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then I understand you put in a big culvert, spent several days putting in a culvert on a forest service road north of Princeton or east of Princeton, I'd say. Why would you waste time on a forest service culvert when county roads are in dire need?
That actually, that is actually county road that's non-maintained, it was one of the Maxville's talked about, so.
One of the washed out, washed out.
I guess you talk about being behind, so what we're in Granite County has always had two graders and three operators down here. But now we're down to like two operators and one grader, I see, so how are we ever going to catch up when we're going down on manpower and the lower end? I don't quite get it.
And I see that grader going up and down from one end of the county to the other like a company car. Why don't we start at one end of the county and work our way so we don't waste so much travel time? It's always on the road.
I think this year their explanation was that we were, he was working with so much, uh, material on so, so long roads up here that he wanted his crew, he was consolidating the crews up here. We talked to him about that. Secondly, um, like last week he had three crews out and three graders on it, okay? One up here and two down there trying to cut up. Well, we were just behind it. That's how we tried to make up for it. Two water trucks, yeah, two water trucks and two graders on it down, you know, all the way into the country.
Anybody else?
I just want to reiterate what I said before about checking in. I'd like to maybe give an opinion on, um, Nicky's tractor being used. I mean, you know, there's kind of a fine line, I guess, and then like you say, it's a small community and I don't want to beat it to death, but, I mean, I think some we should get a neutral opinion on if we can, you know, the, I mean, that'd be like if I came to work and hired my own block cat back, or almost. I mean, is, is that right for Nicky to come to work and then hire his tractor back even? Maybe it's indirectly hired back through a lease deal like some, I mean, I, this, and I can understand the excuse for the truck when it was the fire season. I mean, you kind of throw shit out the window then, but, uh, gotta get done what you gotta get done when, when stuff like that happens.
Well, John, I don't want to start a bigger conversation, but I, I'm just going to lay a question out for you, okay? I came from a big county where there were plenty of contractors if you needed them, uh, totally separate from any employees or commissioners or anybody. Uh, and I moved to a smaller county where that's just impossible if you want to use, everybody's related to somebody, okay?
Right.
But here's the bigger question. We do a lot of things, uh, in this county, which actually I'm proud of, but maybe you don't like. For example, uh, every year in the rodeo, uh, you know, a couple of rodeos down, we take a water truck down there. A county water truck, okay? And a county employee usually takes it down and there's other people that, you know, good hands that use it on our road grounds and then we pick it back up, okay? There've been several, uh.
That's not personal though, they'll remember.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking if you guys agree.
No, I think that's.
Second thing is, is that there are people that live in this county that are homebound or are ill enough that the, the ambulance is going to show up two or three times that way. That lane we're plowing out. We do it on the lake, we do it down here. It's a private driveway, but we plow it. The, we're there anyway, the operator goes in, turns around, plows them back out, so the ambulance can get there, okay? And I could go on and on. The, the loaders parked in Hall, once or twice a year in a big snow event. I think it's Mike Foley gets in and plows out Hall and it's county equipment and county fuel, all, all that, you know? And like I said, I could go on and on. A couple of times a year, you'll get somebody with three or four pots full of cattle down in their yard and they can't get out. And so we sent Mark over there with a load of cattle in a truck in Hall, right there. He drove out and he put gravel on a private road so we could get a look, you know, at least three or four loads of cattle out. I mean, guys, we do this all the time. I mean, and we thought it was just being good neighbors. And, uh, you know, one neighbor said, well, if you do that for so-and-so, will you do it for me? I said, hell yeah. Try to give as much notice as you can. If you absolutely need us, we're going to do that. So that's the discussion maybe we should have too. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Suzy.
Suzy Brown for the record, um, I guess part I'll ask you this question. What is the liability for the county when somebody is using county equipment that is not the county employee?
We don't nor, Suzy, you misunderstood because we don't normally.
You said Mike Foley.
No, okay, in that case you're right, but all the other cases it's county employees, the operator.
Okay, okay, okay.
There's a liability.
Sure?
Yes, yes. So, you know, I think it's great that some of the things you do, but I think you have to think about liability too.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that could cost the county.
And I'm just being honest with you. I think, you know, we, we've done those things in a small community just to keep the small community, you know.
Functional.
Yeah, provide the service.
And you're right, we have a great community and as such, all kinds of rumors get going. And there is one that I heard that I would like to ask Scott. Um, and it was at, uh, the retirement party for Ed Short and Kath Kane. And someone asked Scott about the millings that got put on this driveway. And I've heard that it wasn't answered in such a, uh, well, pretty negative way. Is that true, Scott? Can you tell me what you replied?
Well, it depends. There was three or four people asked me and I just said, I really just like to give my language. I said, I effed up. That's a negative answer, probably is. I did. And I effed up and there's no excuse for it. I don't know how to make it any better. I, serious, I effed up. That's what I.
That's what you said, okay.
And then the one guy was literally, he got right in my face and he was, and I told him get the eff out of my face, so.
Okay. No, I just, I just had heard that, that you had said that you were a commissioner and you could do.
No, I didn't.
You didn't, okay.
I did not.
You did not say that. You could do anything you wanted. You've been a commissioner for seven years, so you could do it.
Yes.
All right. Like I said, our community, we hear lots of, lots of things get going. And so that's the way you find out, is you ask?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
We're here, Elena.
Oh, thank you. Lainey Gagliano for the record. I think it's very honorable of you to apologize, to admit that you did wrong. Scott effed up, as you said. I think it's very admirable. However, what you're talking about answering to, um, Suzy about the liability. What about if these employees had an accident while they were doing your personal work? That's a question that's something to think about. The other thing is when you were doing all those honorable things for the county, helping out, uh, did you have a meeting? When you had the rodeo, did you have a meeting? Was it on the agenda that you discussed this and you made an agreement?
The one night, because they were supposed, I didn't mean to butt in. The one night I had a guy calling me because his friend couldn't show up with a water truck and he just begged that he could take the water truck over there as they've done before and I said yes.
Well, that, you're not supposed, you represent the people here. You also are in charge of the taxpayer. Excuse me, I've got the floor. Taxpayers' money. And, you know, when you handle a, um, a meeting like this, something else that, agendas aren't even put in the newspaper. That's an open meeting, public participation. You don't get up during, when you do have a meeting and walk out of the room or have your little conversations. I've been to your meetings. It's amazing how they're handled. Apparently there's still not any difference. You make it sound like you've been doing all these things, using equipment for personal reasons. County equipment, employees for personal rea, uh, reasons. You've done it before, you admitted it. And it seems like now you're very apologetic because you got caught. You are representatives of the people of this county. You may have a good heart, that's very nice of you. But you're using county equipment and also employees that the people pay taxes for. I mean, if I was a bank robber, I robbed a bank and then all of a sudden I got caught. I said, well, I was going to do all good things with the money. On second thought, I'm sorry, I'll pay it back. My behind would be sitting in a cell somewhere. And I agree with this lady back here. I think you should both resign and I think there should be an indictment and then we can take it from there. Thank you.
So I want to explain one thing about the issues. Every, uh, in fact, if you look at this agenda and every agenda, essentially prior to county road supervisor, uh, we on Tuesdays, the first thing on the agenda is Road and Bridge Superintendent Paul. We do report, okay? Uh, everybody is welcome to come in and that's actually when those things get discussed. Hey, I'm gonna, uh, use, uh, you know, a county road or a water truck for the rodeo, I mean, like that. Or I've got a request to, or one of the commissioners got a request that we talk about and get all that, when that's all discussed. And that's why it's there. Um, you know, we welcome other contractors with expertise, for example, Lawrence. You know, if we're doing something and you see, what the heck are they doing on, you know, I don't know, uh, Maxville Road? Come on up and talk to us. That's the time to do it. Because the, the supervisor, you know, who has the expertise and you, and we can sit down and certainly at least explain to you what we're doing. If we can't, maybe we can work out some other deal. If time goes by and the roads get dusty or it's pothole or you're, come on up at that time. Because three commissioners can make a decision, right? Not two, not catch us in a bar, don't let us in a grocery store. That's what usually happens to me. I go, yeah, but I can't make that decision, okay? A lot to meet. We set that aside at time specifically because we knew a lot of folks, that's the issue. It's a road and that's fine. But we have Paul here and three commissioners and your expertise, you know, you can change our mind. It isn't like it's said. But we want to hear from you. We encourage you to come up and talk about, maybe there's a better way to skin this cat. You certainly have lived here forever, you know, uh, you know, what the consequences of something that we're doing and you can discuss it with us at that time. So that's why we did that, okay? And we're hoping that we, you know, have you guys come up during that period of time, okay? And it's the first thing on the agenda, nine o'clock every Tuesday. And we, unless Paul's really in the middle of something, we require.
I got another question for you. Always about that with peace up. So like Paul called me up because I was complaining about my road and he called me up and he drove, he asked, came up and drove and called me up and said, you're right, your road's crap. He says, I'll, uh, he says, I'll, I'll get back to the commissioners and see if I can gravel it. So why doesn't Paul actually have a budget where he knows how much gravel? If we're paying for a supervisor, why doesn't he know how much gravel he has, how much money to spend on roads so he can decide? I mean, the guy that knows what roads need to be worked are the guys that are grading it, not you two. So why does he have to? If he's our supervisor and he's out and we're paying him to be, why does he have to call you two to say, hey, I want to gravel this little stretch of road? I didn't quite understand that.
Good, no, it's a good question. And here's what it is. Paul's just getting familiar with his budget. Where the gravel comes over, where the money comes from, how he can spend, what, you know, he's just, we're working with Paul. I personally am working with Paul to get him to know his budget. He's been, you know, he has that for him. He could have said, I'm going to do it. But he came in and said, you know, it's going to be so many, I can't remember what he said, uh, costing materials. And, uh, Lawrence is right, that road is crap and, uh, got me a difference. I, that's went way up on my priorities. I'm like, just get it settled, I'm not going out. He said, okay. I mean, he, so he's just new enough, I think Lawrence, that he, he wants to, you know, make sure he's not doing something. I would do that too if I was a new employee, okay? And he also, he comes from private business and what we're trying to teach him is, or I'm somebody who has a well enough budget, how, uh, government has to function. That's all there is to it. But, you know, he came to us and said, this is what I want to do and this road needs to be. We said, okay. How much? We had that conversation of course, but, uh, no, I think it's because he's new. Hey, Lauren.
Anybody else?
Dick Mahada, uh, do I understand the commissioner right? You're saying that you violated, uh, the open meeting laws and you also violated, uh, the, uh, or misappropriated, uh, public funds, but you're just saying this was a stupid thing to do and you're apologizing for it.
I don't know how we violated the open meeting laws, that's what I'm saying. How specifically?
Well, the meeting, the meeting that you had to discuss, uh, Mr. Adler's, uh, paving of his road wasn't conducted as a public meeting.
Well, yeah, it was. We were, there was a public meeting with Mr. Paul.
When was the public meeting?
During that period of time. We can go back and give you the date, but here's, here's what I'm saying. Uh, we didn't take action because we wouldn't have taken action, you know, Mr. Chairman or make a move. We don't do that on every road thing. We're not going to. What we did, where we, where we made a mistake is the location of the test. We were going to do the test. We were going to have those employees haul that, uh, those millings. We were going to have, uh, equipment out there to work them down to see if we could make this stuff. We were going to do that. By the way, that was Paul's decision. And I wanted to do a test before I wanted to make a mess on the road, but we were going to do that. So, uh, that's not something where, you know, we were going to take a motion and actually have it in the minutes. The second part of the question was, no, it was done right here.
That's a violation of the open meeting law.
Why? It was done right here during the meeting.
Right. How can you, how can you say that it's a meeting, uh, when it's not? It's not a public meeting.
It was a public meeting. It was done on a Tuesday. Noticed that, that with the county road supervisor, noticed Road Bridge Superintendent Paul.
Was it, was it put in the paper?
No.
That discussion wasn't part of the agenda or in the minutes?
Uh, no. It was an discussion with the county road supervisor.
Well, there's no requirement for it to be in the newspaper. Yes, there is. The law says it'd be posted.
I disagree with you on that. I disagree with you on that.
Well, it's, uh, well, one, one more thing here. Uh, how much are you reimbursing the county for, for the, uh, paving of the driveway?
I got two bids and I took the highest one. The one guy was just a verbal bid and the other person was, uh, it came to fourteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Really?
That's what Shadow asked for, they, they looked at it.
When, when, when are you going to do that?
It's already been paid.
Has it?
Yeah. It's paid last Friday.
So the commissioners aren't admitting that they violated the law?
I was hoping that we were going to do, do this would be about what happened. I'm going to work with Dick.
So the Montana Attorney General's Office is the review at and you get their decision?
You have, you have no idea when you're going to get that decision?
I'd hope soon, but yeah, I don't.
So you're not going to do this anymore, uh, and you're not going to admit that it is a violation of the law and so, uh.
I'd have to defer to the lawyer whether or not it's a violation of the law, but, yeah.
Does it arise, uh, official misconduct? That'll be with the Montana Attorney General's Office.
Suzy?
Suzy Brown for the record, um, I'm sure all three commissioners are aware of open meeting laws. Two people make a corner, either if it's here or anywhere and you're discussing county information. Um, I glad you're meeting with the road supervisor up here, um, I guess weekly. I think he gets paid good money. He's making seventy thousand dollar salary. I noticed he's driving a new pickup. I'd like to know if that's in the minutes when you decided to make those expenditures of road department. It is, it is in the minutes, okay? No, I just, you know, I know it was like sixty-one thousand dollars and you got two new pickups. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And where did the? And where did the other new one go?
Up here in Hillsford.
Up here at Hillsford, so Ron Graham has it?
Yes.
It's a, it's a crew truck, and we was picking up, we still have taken three pickups to a job, we couldn't put a crew finally in one truck, and, you know, that's what we do.
Is, the other thing is, I have been told that a county employee is getting a ride with the road supervisor to work, is that true?
I think, I think Nicky has a couple times, but he's also dropped in to bring the equipment to the other county. They're doing, okay.
I, I know, I just was.
Yeah, this may be strange, but what we had, when I first came here, we had a crew here, and we had a crew there, never should the two meet, nor the, and Paul stopped out and says, "I got a crew. If I need all of them to haul, I'm gonna use all of them to haul. If I need all of them to lake, I want all of them to be at the lake. If I need part of them, you know, see what I'm saying? And he's got people working with other people that had never worked together before. And, you know, he's trying to build a county crew, not two separate crews, that's what he's trying to do, build a team that work together and work efficiently, that's what he's trying to do.
And as you remember, they, they would never even share equipment.
Uh, just, yeah, to some extent, I know there was a problem, but I think the road department has worked together, you know, I know, I mean, Rock Creek was chip seal, those, I mean, everybody was down. I mean, it's, that just happened, so, okay. No, I just, you know, I'm hearing things, that's how I find out, is if I ask, so.
That looks like it's just talking about the millings. Does that not include man hours or equipment use? The fourteen fifty?
It says, "Red hauling."
So that's not the one that was, that's not the paper that we were sent around?
It's, it just says three millings.
Sorry. I'm just asking again, I thought you were.
This is just a copy of the one that already went around, right?
Oh, Andy, did you?
Yeah. I wanna talk about the millings again. A lot of people have this perception about millings, they think, they bring them out, you think you're getting a regular paving job. Nothing could be further from the truth, as far as I'm concerned, than telling the state to keep their millings when they resurface the highway. If you're gonna go out and prep a road, right, to put millings on, it's gonna cost the county way more money to actually do that right. To go out, you, first you gotta go out and prep that road. If you're gonna get those millings and put them on, or they turn hard, try to get them hard, they're never gonna be like regular hot asphalt. You'll lay them out there, there'll be places they'll get kinda hard, and then they're gonna be soft, and they're kinda crumbly here and there, 'cause they don't have the oil in them, that's been dried out kinda more over the years. If you're gonna come in and prep the road, right, to do that, you gotta bring a crew in, you gotta pull your ditches, get your road crowned up, you gotta get a geotech firm, bring them out there and make sure you have at least ninety-five percent proctor compaction underneath, 'cause if you don't have that hard, what your sub grade is, is what's gonna primp through on top. And you lay those millings down, you better have a, a really good sub base built underneath to hold them. And then when you get done laying them, you gotta come in and chip seal it, 'cause you gotta seal the top that, otherwise the water's gonna penetrate that, 'cause that stuff's coarse. About a year or two's time, through the winter, the water sinks down into it, it freezes, it starts heaving it, starts crumbling. Then how do you patch? Then you got another expensive problem, you gotta go hauling asphalt, put a patch, you can't go out and blade it. If you just have a gravel road, it's easy to maintain. If it's done right, you gotta pull your ditches, put a good roller behind it, a big grader, and I've, in the past, I've talked to commissioners about, they've asked me questions about maintaining roads, I've bladed a lot of roads. And you gotta go in, you gotta have a big grader, you cut that road hard, you cut your bumps out, your chuck holes, your stutter bumps, that I call them, you lay that back in hard. And a lot of these roads, you only have to grade it once a year. And I don't care how much traffic it has on it, if it's done right, a good gravel road, but then it's easy to maintain. If I got a road, the county road right across from our place, we could drive it every day. Several years ago, Riverside Contract, in ninety-six, first was the highway down there, Interstate ninety. They come over there and blasted a bunch of that, and they're on top of that road, no prep, and it's a miserable thing. Right now, the county, and they've asked me, "Does your road need to be bladed?", I say, "No, just leave it alone." There's nothing, it's kinda hard here, then it's soft there, then you get a chuck hole, and you reach out with a grader, you try to pull that in to blade it, and you're pulling up hunks and chunks, and then you got that to try to work back and forth, and, you know, like, as far as I'm concerned, those millings are, if somebody wanted to take them, they offered to take them, and, you know, if the county had to haul them away, I'd say it was a bargain for the county myself, 'cause it's, they're nothing but a maintenance nightmare, it's never, ever gonna be a paving job. And to go in there, to try to prep a road, it'd cost them money, way more money to prep it the way it should be, because they just take them out. When they're in a hurry doing these overlay projects, they're in a hurry, you got a bunch of Jipho trucks and company trucks, and they're just blasting around there. And what's underneath is what you're gonna have on top, 'cause if you don't prep it, it'd cost the county a lot of money to go in there and get those roads prepped, they had a time to get ready for that. So that's, you know, I just wanna, some other things I can't say about, but that's just a, you know, I've been around those millings quite a bit, and done a lot of road equipment here, if you don't, you know, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's just a, a big expense to the county. Gravel's, you know, a lot cheaper way to go, I think, 'cause everybody's, millings are, are not hot asphalt.
Thank you, Andy. Anybody else?
I guess I see this thing here with Dan Villa, with the price fourteen fifty still, I guess I don't see where the price for the equipment was.
There was just an estimate that I could get from him, he just said, I told him what was there, and he just.
He didn't come.
Okay, I guess my question is then, uh, I've been around a lot of crews, I kinda know what crews cost, just do worth per day and that. So, how many days is this day?
He said, "Right, about five hours."
Five hours, okay, so you figure one day with travel time and everything. So, at fourteen hundred dollars a day, and you had all that equipment, and all those people, that doesn't even pay for one guy. By the time you pay their wages, their show of time, their benefits for the day, which everybody has, I mean, go try to hire a dozer for a day and see how much that alone costs. I'm just saying, I don't, I think it's out of line. And the reason I say no is because we can't, you know, taxpayers at the lake, we don't get a lot up there, and I feel that we should get some stuff, and if we can pay all this kind of money for stuff, we should be able to get stuff up there, and, don't get me wrong, I appreciate what you guys do up there now. Not, by any means do I not appreciate that, but I think that estimate's way under.
Suzie?
Yeah, I think Mr. Adler should reimburse the granite company for all of the salary of his employees and the, and the amount of money that was used in the equipment. And then we start talking about you staying here. But I think that fourteen fifty is, is not, that's how I feel.
Suzie Browning, for the record, um, what is the reason that you paid this on Friday, Was that just to rectify the situation?
He made the promise that he would do it and, and kept his promise. I guess I, I, if you guys have some issues with that, uh, bid, I think then, uh, I mean, you gotta have some type of person come in and say that it's not, not right. And I don't, fourteen fifty from a neutral, uh, company, I don't see how you can argue with that.
But we used our employees, we should get the money back that the employees had, that the county paid.
But that asphalt company's saying that's the fair market value of putting new asphalt on that, on the driveway.
Okay, so if I go get a bid.
Am I misinterpreting that?
If I go get a bid for the.
The milling, or millings, new millings on.
Fine, so if I go get a bid, and some company says we can do that, we can use the company, uh, county employees, trucks and everything to put it down, but we'll pay for the material? That's what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that they're, what they're gonna give is the fair market value of what that benefit is, and so we have to have another, another company to come in and say that that's wrong. I mean, to, for us, just to say, "Oh, I don't, don't agree with that," you have to have some basis for what you're saying.
What I'm saying, the basis is you used county employees and equipment, correct? To, to put this down to start with. Am I correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, why shouldn't he pay for the time that the county employees and equipment were used?
I can't, I mean, I just.
No, I, I'm just bringing this up, because you, you, if it's used, that's a cost of the taxpayers.
But how is getting an estimate from a, a company to come in and do it any, any, any different from that?
Did they actually look at the job, figure the truck mileage, I mean?
They, uh, figured the truck mileage from verbal.
Forty minutes around? Forty minutes around? How many will it take?
They'll save a lot of money, the trucks they come with, they're gonna haul almost double amount of material that county trucks gonna haul. They have end dump trucks, just a regular end dump that hauls seventeen ton. They bring a side dumpster belly, they're gonna be bringing twenty-eight ton, you got right here forty-five ton, you got two small trucks. So you got, you run a truck out to Missoula, you're about somewhere they're at out there, I know where their place is out by Hawaii, and you're gonna, on the outside, probably, on the outside edge, you can, four hours of truck time, and there are two hours out back, two trucks, and that'd be kinda generous of the truck time, 'cause I have all that block. They're gonna run there, they got a little old, what they call a Huber grader, a little tractor, a little blade, they'll run that out there, a roller, a little roller on that, you know? I'd say this fourteen fifty for a private company, and I know their shadow asphalt, they did a job for us this spring, and they don't, they don't pay cheap, that's like, you know, that, as far as a private company doing this, 'cause they're basically giving the millings away, 'cause they can't, they get them down there and stuff, and the millings are garbage, basically.
One more thing, I guess, for me, and I guess I'm done. Instead of all this hearsay, should we have done this, should we have done that? I guess the easy way to solve this problem, and see if it's right, wrong, or what should be done, is this how the attorney general come in, do their study, say, "Yes, this was right," or, "No, this is wrong," and go from there.
Made that request, and so.
That'd be the easy way, is, I mean, he'd say, "What's right, what's wrong?", and if it's right, great, if it's wrong, then it's wrong.
So my letter actually went to Brant Lydic, who's over at Prosecution Services, so not, not.
Yeah, you can find it either way, whatever they say.
Wayne, on that letter, did you put in, I mean, I, I just, you know, I, with, you know, the county employees having their equipment leased back to the county indirectly or directly, is that part of that letter?
So I, I did not, not, not put that in there. I agree with you, the county's gotta avoid the appearance of conflict there, that, uh, so, and the, that could be brought up to them, that, that, uh, from what Bill said, though, those facts, I don't, I mean, we'll let, we can let them look at them.
Wayne, do you, I'm sorry, do you have a copy of your letter?
Uh, yes, I do.
Can we get a copy of it?
You know, um, I don't believe that's a public document.
Wayne, was that a request for an investigation in that letter that you sent?
Correct, yeah. And anyone in here is welcome to call Brant Lydic to assure if you have any issues with that letter getting sent. If that's sent.
Well, it involves county employees, elected officials, I don't see why it's not
That's a request for investigation, I believe that's a, a public document.
So, so I just wanna, Mr. Bill?
Yes.
I just wanna, I don't wanna misunderstand as far as I feel about this, okay? I'm a big boy, I know right from wrong. There wasn't anything right about this, okay? And I, we're not trying to make excuses and talking about the, um, testing and, so that's something we're gonna do, we're gonna do it anyway, we're gonna do it again, okay? But where it went is wrong, got it? We've, you know, loud and clear, you're not gonna get an excuse for me on that, okay? Or, nor the other commissioners, all right? It was wrong. So don't be confused here, we're, I'm not trying to minimize exactly right from wrong, I know what's right and wrong, this was wrong. You know, was it criminal? Don't know, find out, I guess, but.
That's exactly what.
Okay, and you, you guys, you guys as taxpayers, let's be really clear, you got my apologies, okay? We, you know, we're, we're, we're better than this as a community, so, there you go.
My name's Matt People. Um, I just wanted to point out that I, I appreciate that not one person has ever said that there's an excuse for this. I appreciate the honesty. For all the bad that's been said, I'd like to bring out something good that happened this last week, and that was that there was trimming that needed to take place up Rock Creek, and Scott Adler come to me and asked if this was something that the close-up kids would wanna do, because my wife and I are the close-up advisors. That was a smart decision. That saved the county probably half of what it would've cost them to bring a contractor out of Missoula, that probably saved them somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three thousand dollars, and kept that money local to help some kids go on a trip, that some of them, it might be the only time they ever even leave the state of Montana. Not everything that happens in this county is bad, and when Scott asked me if we would be willing to do that, you bet we're willing to do that, at which point he directed me to Paul Hall, who helped to organize the whole thing, and it was a great little deal that went off without a hitch, and that's really gonna help those kids to be able to do something good, and I appreciate that.
I wanna realize, I know what you're gonna, I can tell.
Yeah, yeah.
These two were involved in it too, wasn't it? I could see that.
Why do you assume, why do you assume that, Suzie?
The county, you're in the county road right of way, we talked about liability, I support close-up, I think close-up is a wonderful.
But don't assume they're doing things wrong, I mean, you gotta.
It's in the, it's in the minutes, so if anything happens?
Last three years to close-up.
Okay, no, that's great. Close-up's a wonderful program. Close-up's a wonderful program, I think that's great, I'm glad it's kosher, that's good.
I appreciate the effort and the opportunity for those kids to earn something, and to keep some of that tax money local, some of which is taxes that I've paid.
Anybody else have anything to share with us?
I, I do have one question. In talking to both Bill and Scott last week, you guys both kinda indicated that during the conversation, where you were trying to find a place to do the test, you just kinda left it up in the air. So, who, who eventually made the call that they were gonna go to Scott's house and do this?
Probably me, 'cause I had the dozer there, I'll take it.
So, I mean, you said, "Paul, let's get this done," and?
I just, 'cause I wasn't gonna sue the county.
Okay.
And it, it killed a bunch of our grass, and we ran over a bone box, and, you know, so I mean, and then you go down there and look, and there're big chunks of rubber all of a sudden coming up, and.
Where's the rubber come from?
And they cut it off the highway and went down too deep, and then they took some of that crack, see what Lawrence said? He just said that?
I didn't say that.
Anyway, there's pretty big.
You know, when a bachelor ran over your bone box, you'd be going, "Adam, down there."
I'm not saying.
Well, you said it, I know, I did. I thought it.
Anybody else? Well, I really appreciate you guys coming in and, uh, sharing with us what you had to share, and, uh, and I just wish I would've been invited into the conversation, because I sure would've vetoed it.
One more thing, Dad. I got one more thing. That day they were doing it, and they started with it, I come to draw the road, and I saw a truck in there, I saw another come there and stop, saw, and I thought, "Boy, I'm glad he's taking it out of that, you're glad they're not putting that on our road over there, 'cause it'd be nothing but a maintenance nightmare." Said it's a good, that looks like a good place to waste it, as far as I'm concerned, so. And I'm not, you're good to, to Scott or something like that, but to me, it looks like it's just a, I'm glad it wasn't being put on our stretch county road.
Well, John, long, we were stuck there for three days because they plowed a black pine, but they don't plow our road. So maybe you guys can do something about it. There's a bunch of elderly people living down there.
Yep, come in, uh, you know, anytime you're welcome on Tuesdays and we'll talk about that.
No, no, I just did right there.
Well, especially, especially somebody that's homebound or injured or elderly, you know, we don't know where all these people live.
The thing is, there's rules that you have to comply by. And I know this is a small county, but there's still rules you have to comply by. Okay? And, and you know, we were stranded for three days. No way were they gonna come down our road. Cause that's not the, a co- that's not a county road.
I wouldn't necessarily say that. If somebody's stranded, we're gonna try to help it. If you're a county resident, usually, you know.
No, you don't have to stop it. Just do it as a public for a public meeting. You can discuss whatever you want. The date that you supposedly discussed this, you can say it was any day, any Tuesday. Because at nine o'clock, actually, you do the pledge of allegiance at nine o'clock supposedly. But at, at any Tuesday, you talk about the roads, right? So you can, and it's not on the minutes. That's another thing. Oh, it was on the minute. You said it wasn't.
No, I'm saying the discussion with the road supervisors on in the minutes and on the agenda.
But not the discussion that you guys had about doing this at Scott's.
The specific discussion, like if you came in and said, hey, I need somebody to plow a road or something like that. We wouldn't know that's even coming, but that's the time for it right there. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Had the office minutes been approved?
Not yet.
May I request the draft copy of them, please?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Remember, you don't give out, you gotta, you gotta, we gotta attorney general opinion on that one.
You'll get a final.
Oh, you're, oh, okay, okay.
We get finals, we don't get final.
It's approved.
Okay. See, this is new, Suzy.
Okay.
They still get them all the time.
I'm not having, you could, no problem.
Okay.
Hey, Mary.
Thank you.